I'm calling this meeting to order at seven oh eight.
Just about off-street parking in West Rutland.
We have Kevin Mullen and Tony Musack and myself here. And we have Jill Burkett calling. Lucy Thayer is absent. Are there any additions, deletions on the agenda items? Okay, if not, may I have a vote?
I will make a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, review and approval of the January and April minutes. And again, I have to apologize, but I didn't think we would have enough for the January, so I did not include them in the packet. The April minutes are in the packet. If I could have a motion, please, to table the Januaries, because they do have to be approved.
So moved.
Kevin and Tony seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And review and approval of the April minutes. For the people that are here, if you go on page two, it says "Discussion Followed" in red, because I think that's a clarification or that's a change that I caught. Are there any other changes?
Yes.
Okay, Jill?
In under proposed zoning regulations?
Yes.
After the parentheses, it says "short discussion followed as out there," and then go down. And it says fifteen days notice, comma, "it leave," little, and it's sugary, "it leaves" with S.
Okay. Thank you. I also noticed in that paragraph on the first page, that discussion, right after the bullet, discussion of wording on page 110, site plan, development plan, and procedures, February draft, there are two parentheses instead of one.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And an extra space?
And an extra space, right. Okay. So, any other changes? Okay. Tony, your name is spelled right all the way through?
I think so.
I know, hey.
Yeah, after adjourned, there's a stray R for no reason whatsoever at the end of the seven thirty-two. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And back to where it says "Discussion Followed." Jill Burkett and E. Burner, pages forty to fifty-three. I caught this one already. There was a missing parenthesis. It's in red in the copies everyone has here. So, that was already caught. Okay? All right. And tomorrow, when I read it again, I'm sure there will be one or two more. But can I have a motion to accept it with noted changes?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Tony seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Zoning administrator reports in the past two weeks. I have issued since our last meeting. Basically, three new permits. People just adding on to the houses and/or the parks. So, and the DRB did send a approval for one of the, and the facts of findings are online. One of the applications was approved, the other one was denied, because it's in a hazardous flood zone. And also, it would take a non-conforming parcel and create another non-conforming parcel. So, one was accepted and one was denied. And the facts of findings signed are on the webpage. Okay? So, that's about it for that. Proposed regulations commissioners' reports, Kevin? So, anything that we should pay attention to?
There were, most of them were little differences, but it seemed like everybody else described their districts, and we didn't.
Okay.
And it, I just thought it made it easier.
Okay.
There's another one, hang on.
You mean they define, when you say define their districts, you mean they?
Right in the town, right in the town plan, they describe the districts, yeah.
Okay, so, for example, the south end of Main Street to the west end of?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The other thing was, and there's a couple of these. Required frontage for access to public roads. We're kind of the nice guy. We've got twenty feet of frontage. Proctor requires fifty feet. And West Rutland required fifty feet. With Proctor, at least it was fifty feet for two units. But West Rutland's fifty feet for one.
Okay.
Just thought we would think about that. Another one was when you have a lot where it's actually taking, in two zones. Okay, we were generous again. We gave people fifty feet. Everybody else gave thirty. Those kind of things. Small, easy to talk about and adjust things. Some of them were silly. But with regard to when a structure is considered demolished, destroyed, or abandoned, they're moving in like ninety days. We're moving in a year.
Yeah.
You know? And that was one of the ones I just wondered, you know. We might want to shorten that time.
Okay, and what section is that, Dan?
That's under abandoned, section four sixteen. If you go down to the second paragraph, it says, "West Rutland allows fourteen days following significant damage or destruction for the owner to make a reasonable effort to secure the site from unauthorized public entry. Within a hundred and eighty days after a permanent or temporary building or structure has been significantly damaged, destroyed, or demolished, a town permit is required if you want to demolish it or reconstruct it. And all the debris has to be off in a hundred and eighty days."
And that's in which town?
West Rutland. And I've always felt with regard to those kind of things, owners know whether or not they're going to rebuild the darn thing. We don't need to give them a year to just, you know, quote aside. With regard to off-street parking, I don't think it's an issue here too much, but in Proctor, if you put up a building, you have to already have the off-street parking in the plan. And it has to be such that when the people are leaving the property, they're not backing onto a main road.
Yeah, I think I saw that, too.
And I thought that was a good idea.
Yeah. I saw that, there was something like that in the parking. No, West Rutland had parking lot. We've got parking spaces in our definitions. Define space, which is at least nine feet wide and twenty feet long, located outside the right-of-way parking aisle or driveway, used for the parking of one motor vehicle with practical access to the road or right-of-way, and sufficiently surfaced with durable material to permit year-round use. And that's in Wallingford and West Rutland. Proctor just says a space measuring ten feet by twenty-two feet for off-road parking of a motor vehicle in conformance with these regulations. So.
Now, with regard to the home occupation, there's not a lot of difference, except, I want to make sure I get which one right it is. Yeah, Proctor only allows one employee.
Yeah, and we allow two.
Yeah. And West Rutland does two, they allow two. But I just think that, you know, again, get a permit and open a business. If you've got two people working for you, you've got a business.
I think that might be, I'm not really a hundred percent sure off the top of my head, but I think the statutes, the Vermont statutes may define a home occupation. I haven't looked at it.
Okay.
But if it does, then we definitely would have to go along with whatever the statutes say.
Oh, yeah.
And, I don't know if I can find it really fast here. The Vermont statutes.
Now, with regard to temporary structures, West Rutland says you can put one up for a hundred and fifty days without a permit. And then, you can ask for a permit. I thought that was bizarre.
It is, in a way. I agree. But of course, the thing to remember, too, was West Rutland is a lot bigger than we are.
Oh, yeah, and they're more commercial.
Yeah, no, I can't find it in the state statutes really fast. As to, let's see, maybe I can find it faster. It's in Phoenix, no. I can't find it for the state really fast.
Now, with, you know, conditional use and all, we give people forty-five days after the closing of a hearing of appeal. And nobody else even mentions anything about a hearing of appeal.
Because that's in state statutes. And frankly, that, I think that the DRB's going to be talking about that. So, I don't think we, we can wait to see what they have to say. But you do have a time, and it is by the state. After a permit is approved, how many days to appeal? And if it's a DRB appeal, you've got X amount, you know. And I think one of the things we might want to do is perhaps reference that to the state VSA's, and that way, we could do it.
Sure.
All right. So, DRB appeals.
Now, this is a strange question, but do we have a flood plan overlay for our map? Our official map?
You'd have to go into the ordinances, because that's where they reside at the moment. So, reference statute. But I believe we do. Hold on, and I will tell you. Vermont, our town.
In the West Rutland plan, their plan opens up with, I think it's five pages of charts.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I'm thinking, that's really nice, but you don't even know what these are for yet.
Yeah. Actually, we don't have an overlay, but if you go over to the FEMA, you do.
Okay.
So, and I know FEMA is redoing the maps. And supposedly, we'll get our new ones in about five years. They figure it's going to take about five years to redo all the maps in the state of Vermont. But yeah, if you, you can actually get a FEMA overlay that shows where the flood plains are and everything. If we approach the select board possibly about including the flood hazardous ordinances as an appendix to this, then we could take a printout of the FEMA maps and put it right in there.
That would be nice.
Okay. So. Okay?
Yep.
Anything else?
No, I think the rest are all there. You can wade through them. They're not too difficult.
Jill, any comments?
I'm listening.
Okay. Okay.
Sounds good. Good points, really good points.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm still, on the map, the town map, I'm asking the RRCP if they could take the map that is the official village map, at least. And if you look at it, and you all got copies of it a couple of months ago and another year ago, it's all referencing addresses that no longer exist on there, because we re-addressed everything.
Yeah, nine-one-one.
Yeah, this one, seven was just route seven, north and south. And now, it's Main Street. And I've asked, and their mapping person is just absolutely slammed at the moment. And I've asked him if he could take a copy of that and maybe put it on a grid and get rid of all of that, and just put the streets. And then, we could figure out, is that the south side of the street, or the north side of the street? The east side, or the west side? And then, at least do it for the villages, you know? And I'm waiting for him to get back. But I will be at the Regional Planning Commission meeting next week, and I will keep on asking.
Cool.
Yeah, I'll keep on asking him. So, hopefully, we'll get that done. Okay, Tony?
So, I have to admit, I'm a little embarrassed with Kevin's rigor here. I just put some things down that I thought where we differed in some respect or might need to expand upon something. I came up with a few things. First of all, on my thing, on the page twenty-six,
Do I have a copy of that?
The very bottom. We should have gotten one last, one of these folders last week.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah, well, I just have the end of seven ninety, line seven ninety at the end of.
Yeah.
That is just missing on my sheet. I don't know if it just didn't print. So.
Yeah, ninety is the end on that page.
Yeah, I know, but it just, it doesn't make sense.
Because the next one is?
Addition to article.
Yeah, but remember, we're not worried about the numbers on the side?
Yeah, oh, maybe I just thought that that was a dangling, does that make sense? It's so specific, saying, "in addition to our freestanding, non-internally illuminated flush mountainside requirements."
Sixty feet maximum area.
Yeah, I guess I see what it's saying, but I don't think that's a, that doesn't make grammatical sense in my sentence structure, I guess. Okay.
Okay, well, we can reword that, because I think we did reword it.
Oh, okay, so.
Yeah, because it's the same on all of them.
Okay. Let's see, so, I think Proctor does, says something about when you're issuing a zoning permit for, they really stressed that the National Flood Insurance Program, you should, they tell you how to apply to it or something like that before you can basically get a permit. But we sort of, this is in section six oh two, but it's mentioned in our section six oh seven, so I guess we're okay, as long as people who are in the flood plain are well-advised that they're not going to get a permit until they, you know, have a, they have actually a National Flood Insurance Program Coordinator for something like that. I think it's a state, state has that.
Yeah, that's Kyle. And actually, depending on where you are, you might not need.
Right.
You might not need it, yeah.
Okay. So, Proctor has something interesting. It says something about you can, if someone, if someone gets a permit, builds something, but don't, doesn't follow it, there's a fifty, according to state, you can, a butters or whomever can basically appeal that within fifteen years. I don't know, it says that.
What page are you on?
In Proctor, it's section eleven oh three, which I hadn't ever heard of.
That can be cute.
Eleven oh two, limitations in enforcement?
I have eleven oh three, hang on.
Yeah, section oh two, section oh three, page fifty-nine. An action injunction or other enforceable proceedings relating to the failure to obtain or comply with the terms and conditions of any required or duly-recorded municipal land use permit may be instituted against the alleged offenders if the action injunction or other enforcement proceedings is instituted within, yes, fifteen years from the date the alleged violation first occurred.
I don't know if we need that in our, it just struck me as very different, but apparently, it's state law, and it sounds like you ought to do the right thing the first time. It's just something to consider. Gotten by without it, as long as we know that. The other thing, in section twelve oh two in Proctor, they have interested persons. And I remember being an interested person based on the fact that I went to the DRB and was protesting something, but they have some other, they say, any ten voters or property owners within the municipality who can become interested people. I don't know if that's just, it doesn't say that it's under a state law. That sounds like it's just under, I don't know. I'm not sure if that's under the twenty-four VSA, section four to four, whatever B.
I believe it is.
So, I think our interested, let's see, our interested persons don't really talk about that. Can't remember, no, I can't find our interested, interested persons. Just something that we, I mean, we don't necessarily have to explain everything all out that's in that state statute, I mean, but we can always refer to it and just say, you know, if you have previously been to the DRB, you can appeal it to the, as an interested person. Or if you meet other requirements of that, you know, law and section, I mean, that's what we could do. I hate spelling everything out that the state already has spelled out, but.
That was a good catch, though.
We might need to at least make mention that there are other categories. Check to see if you apply or.
Yeah, it's four, four, six, five, that'd be.
Because ours is, I can't even find where our interested, interested persons are right now. But it doesn't include all of that.
No, it doesn't. And I think that is one thing that the DRB is going to be taking a look at.
Okay.
So.
Something to keep in mind.
Yeah.
I mean, in general, you know, I think that what we have is pretty good. It's kind of hard to find things that you really want to, really want to change.
Good.
So, going forward, in our section seven oh two, park requirements for mobile home parks. And one of the other towns mentions that you, that we may never have a mobile home park here, but they've stressed that all mobile homes are for residential use only, and no commercial activity is permitted in a mobile home park. So, the other thing they have is, they require a concrete slab for a foundation, so I guess they don't start tilting when the frost comes. That's something that we don't mention, even though we may never use that. I thought would possibly be useful. Everything else is pretty, pretty standard, I thought.
Well, we can add that in.
If you want.
You know, I know each one of these, Proctor's definition of a mobile home park was, and this is just the definitions at the end of everything, was pretty extensive. You can see it, it's on page two of the handout I gave you all. "Any parcel of land under single or common ownership or control which contains or is designed, laid out, or adopted to accommodate more than two mobile homes. Nothing herein shall be construed to apply to premises used solely for storage or display of mobile homes. Mobile home park does not mean any parcel of land under the ownership of an agricultural employer who provides up to four mobile homes used by full-time workers or employees of the agricultural employer as a benefit or condition of employment, or any parcel of land used solely on a seasonal basis for vacation or recreational mobile homes." I mean, that's, that's pretty.
Yeah.
And that's the definition.
I think somewhere else, they talk about a trailer park, where, you know, that's where you bring your camper or whatever, is what they talk about.
Yeah.
Speaking of camping and recreational equipment, I mean, we have, in our, reg, section eight oh three, we do say twenty-one continuous days, but we don't have actual limit of how many days per year, at least. So, I don't know, it could be there, I think some people say sixty, others ninety.
Okay, it is in the state statutes, sixty.
That's sixty, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Cool.
What line was that?
That's our section eight oh three. We, and it doesn't have sixty days. It says you can't be there more than twenty-one days in a row. Continuous days.
Yeah, it's.
I believe you.
Okay, yeah. I will check with the VSA statutes, and I believe that's chapter ten, and see if it more or less applies in here. But that is one of the things that the zoning administrators around are all saying, is sixty days, no more than twenty-one in a row.
All we need is someone who can force those.
Yeah, well.
Going on to signs and advertising display, our, under section nine oh one, line seven, it says, other, I think it's Proctor, they say something before alteration or installation, they also say replacement and relocation of a sign. And just sort of have alter, alteration, replacement, installation, or relocation. I don't know if we need to put all that in, but that was something that stood out, I guess. In other words.
Actually.
Do without a permit.
Jill, what do you think? Can you hear? I may have lost her. Jill? She stepped away. I personally, I think that's a good idea, just to spell it out in announcements. I personally, I think that's a good idea, just to spell it out in announcements. And it's not going to take up any more room, so...
Add replacement or relocation along with alteration or installation.
Yeah, replacement, relocation. Because if you... Well, no, you wouldn't. When Sitka wanted to change their sign and they had to go before the Development Review Board, of course, that was a alteration. And as it turns out, it was also a relocation several years ago. So that was taken into account, but the DRB did rule on it, so...
And the only other thing I thought we might look at is section... Our section nine oh eight, non-operational business. Once again, we're... I think we're a little too generous with letting after business closes to keep the sign up for six months. I think other towns say ninety days. You know, I think if you can't get a sign down in ninety days, or at least substantially down by then...
Considering they're not wired, you know?
Yeah, that's right. We don't have them.
Okay. All right.
And I, you know, I didn't spend as much time as I thought I would be able to. I've been a little busy and I, for some reason, thought this meeting was tomorrow night, but I caught myself. And here I am.
It's okay. I don't think... Jill? No. Okay. So we won't go on to her. What I did was I found it was just easier to take my section of the definitions. I have M through Z. And basically, put them in a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
It's just... To me, it was just a lot easier.
I tried that to start with.
Yeah.
And then some of these things were just so long.
Yeah. Well, and this is not complete. I only made it to the Rs. But you can see, we have West Rutland and Wallingford, we've got manufactured mobile homes. Proctor has manufactured homes. And it's interesting because Proctor has for floodplain management purposes, and we actually define what a mobile home is. So I don't know. And ours does say, if you notice here, used on a concrete slab in the definition. But I think perhaps maybe it might... Since we have it in the definitions, it might be well to put it in the, you know, park bit, you know? So I don't really know. And they're also saying that in Proctor, the term manufactured home does not include trailer parks, travel trailers, and other similar vehicles. So maybe we keep what we have because I think it looks well. The only thing is, as you can see, West Rutland also adds C tiny houses. Which I... We've talked about that before.
Yes.
And I think maybe tiny houses needs to be added in.
Oh, I... Yeah, we gotta say something about tiny houses.
Yeah. I haven't gotten that far yet, so I don't know if they're mentioned, but if West Rutland is saying C tiny houses, I'm quite sure it's in there. My question is, a medical center, do we really need to have a definition of a medical center? Because are we really going to... I mean, I'm just asking. West Proctor doesn't, West Rutland does, we do.
Well...
But does a medical center... Is that... And Tony, I will defer to you. Is a medical center... I... When you say medical center, I always think of a hospital.
Yeah, I do, too. But you... There's a lot of different types of medicine in this world, for better or worse, these days. But I... We have the certain districts, you can have a medical center.
Yeah.
I don't... Once again, I don't know this is ever going to come up, but...
It's not that big of a deal to leave it in, actually. And then the other thing is, as you see, in Proctor, it has means sea level. I don't really think we need to add that in.
No.
And then they get into mobile homes, which is basically, you know... But if you look, they actually go into a pretty interesting definition of it, which is the VSA definition, by the way. So what I was thinking is, perhaps what we should do is just refer anyone to the VSA without going through.
Spelling it out.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't see why not.
All right. And then let's see.
Put it in at the bottom of the manufactured mobile home.
And then under, as you can see, under mobile home park, ours is pretty short and Proctor's pretty long. Same thing with modular panel, although West Rutland doesn't have it, we do. Although it does... Ours does say single, two-family, multifamily, or commercial structure. They don't really go into it. They stay basically manufactured or constructed to be used as a place for human habitation, but which is not constructed or equipped with a permanent hitch or other device allowing it to be attached to behind a motor vehicle and which does not have permanently attached to its body or frame any wheel or accesses.
Yeah.
So I mean, they're kind of...
They could have just said non-train.
Yeah.
I thought the word, you know, well, anyway, never mind.
Go ahead.
If they just moved the word permanent, just put it in there. It's meant to be that way.
Yeah. And I think ours is, to be honest, I think ours is a little more than what they have.
They spend a lot of time telling you what it's not.
Yeah. And then as you can see, Proctor doesn't on page three, Proctor doesn't have virtually... Well, they don't. They don't have anything defining a motel, a motor coach vehicle, dealership, commercial, neighborhood commercial, nightclub, non-commercial. And then you get to what new construction is. I quite frankly think that everybody more or less has an idea of what new construction is. Do we need to have a definition?
No, did I miss that page?
Oh, that's page four. You're double-spaced. I mean, double, printed on both sides.
Oh.
Sorry.
Duh.
Hi, Jill.
I don't think so, but...
Yeah.
We never know.
Yeah. I mean, it does refer to floodplain management purposes, means structures for which the start of construction commenced on or before the effective date of floodplain management regulations adopted. I... It's... To me, it's virtually saying the same thing as new construction is, okay, the town adopted the floodplain ordinance, anything built after that is considered new construction. So I don't really think we need to have that. But again, I'm bringing the differences over, so... The next one is the non-conformity because Wallingford and West Rutland do not define non-conformity, per se. Proctor says non-conformity uses lots, parcels, or structures that do not conform to present bylaws.
Sure, something that doesn't conform is...
Non-conforming, yeah. Whereas Wallingford and West Rutland more or less split that out, and they have non-conforming lots or parcels and non-conforming use. Proctor has non-conformity, a use of landlot or structure that does not comply with the use regulations for the district of which it's intended. Wallingford and West Rutland have use of land that does not conform to the present bylaws, but did conform to all applicable laws, ordinance, and regulations prior to the enactment of the present laws, including a structure improperly authorized as a result of error by the administrative officer. And that's both in Wallingford and West Rutland.
Hopefully, it's been more than fifteen years.
So I honestly think those definitions are things we may have to really kind of take a look at a little bit further. And then Proctor, and this is really for Jill's sake, is... Proctor defines a dimensional non-conformity, which is a structure lot or land or part thereof not in conformance with the dimensions required of this regulation. Okay? Whereas the other two have a non-conforming structure. Which is a structure, a part of a structure that does not conform to the present bylaws, but was in conformance with all applicable laws, ordinance, and regulations prior to the enactment of the present laws, including a structure improperly authorized as a result of error by the administrative officer.
You're also going to find that on my stuff.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So I don't know if maybe we want to take a look at that?
I think we could simplify and consolidate it and simplify it.
Yeah. So next month, I'll bring this back and I'll put... Or I'll send it out in soft copy and I'll point out which ones that we think we want to talk about. Proctor has an official zoning map, and it says the one true copy of the town zoning map located in the office of the town clerk. We've got pretty much the same thing, right?
Yeah.
They have it in the definitions, we've got it somewhere else.
Yeah, I've got it over here. Hang on. Establishment of zoning districts and zoning maps. Ours is in the... Is right there, Article three.
Yeah. So I don't really think we need to put it in the definitions.
No.
It's already there. All three agree exactly, same wording, except the name of the town is changed when it comes to municipal parks.
Yep.
West Rutland defines a parking lot. It's an area of four or more parking spaces designed to allow drivers to exit onto public roads headlights first and include area for snow plowing, although they say piling, and trash disposal containers. We don't define parking lots. But do we have any area outside of Cumberland's and maybe in front of the post office where we have parking lots?
Yeah. Yeah, over by the ball field.
By the ball... But that's town property. So I don't... I mean, West Rutland has it, Proctor doesn't have it, we don't have it.
Okay.
So I personally think that that's something that we can not worry about.
Skip right by the old parking lot.
Yeah. Parking spaces are... Jill, it's interesting. Our parking space and West Rutland's parking space is a defined space which at least nine feet of wide and twenty feet long located... And I already read this, I know. Located outside of the right-of-way parking aisles or driveways used for parking of one motor vehicle with practical access to the road or right-of-way and sufficiently surfaced with durable material to permit year-round use. Proctor says a space measured ten by twenty-two feet for off-road parking of a motor vehicle in conformance with these regulations. Personally, I kind of like the idea of having the definition.
Oh, yeah.
Although our town, I mean, we don't really have a lot of places that the town takes care of, that's the zoning. Proctor has a performance bond, we don't. And quite frankly, I'm looking... I was looking at it and I was thinking, why? Unless it's for the town government, that would be more or less an ordinance and not something that we have. So I would say we don't need it. Permitted use, Wallingford and West Rutland with a little bit of change in the fact that they're referencing different things, we all pretty say the same, which is use specifically allowed in a district excluding illegal uses. I wonder why illegal uses. Conditional uses and non-conforming uses permits are required for each permitted use. The zoning administrator may issue permits for conforming permitted uses without further Development Review Board review. And basically, West Proctor says the same, but they don't spell out DRB. They just say DRB review. So those are the same. I do have to say, West Rutland defines personal uses, Proctor does not, and ours is businesses providing services of a personal nature. But I was always taught you can't define something by using it in the definition. I could be wrong. So West Rutland says includes but not limited to barber, hairdresser, beauty parlor, masseuse, shoe repair, shoe shine, laundry, dry cleaner, photographic studio, and businesses providing services of a personal use. I don't know if we need to have all that, or we just leave what we have.
That's fine where it is.
Okay. So we'll keep this. Then planned development unit, or a PUD, which is planned development, planned unit development. And basically, Wall... West Rutland and we have pretty much the same thing. So I would say we just keep it, although I've seen a few typos where I copied it over. But... And we talk about developments, anyway. Principal building, Wallingford and West Rutland definitions are exactly the same. A building in which is conducted the main or principal use of the lot on which said building is located. Attached garage or car parts... Car parts, excuse me. Openethesides but roofed are part of the principal building. And then in Proctor, it says a building in which the principal use of the property on which it is located is conducted. Attachments are part of a principal building. Ours, I think, is a little more clear.
Yeah.
So I would say forget that. Private club, Proctor does not define it. We define it exactly as West Rutland defines it, word for word. Professional residence office, Proctor doesn't define it. We define it, West Rutland, almost word for word. And I would say that's fine. Then public water, public sewer, we define it. West Rutland defines it, again, word for word. Proctor doesn't. Wallingford, where it comes to recreational or private... Recreational, comma, private, it says recreational use is privately owned and commercially operated. The other two define them much broader in the sense of Proctor, for example, recreational use is privately owned and operated, including but not limited to picnic grounds, archery ranges, hiking and riding trails, hunting and fishing areas, wildlife sanctuaries, nature preserves, swimming areas, and boat launching sites. Golf driving range, golf pitch and putt course, par-three golf courses, hunting preserves, skating rinks, swimming pools, parks, beaches, tennis courts, indoor bowling alley, theater, table tennis and pool hall. My God, that's seventy-six trombones, right? The music man.
Pretty much.
Yeah, you know, got to watch those pool halls. Gymnasium, health club, hobby, workshop, archery ranges, and riding stables. Basically, West Rutland does the same thing, and then they say, and similar uses. So, you know? Do we really want to define everything or recreation use is privately owned and commercially operated?
I think that says it.
I... First of all, I think it does it all, too.
Do, too.
You know? Jill?
I agree, yeah.
Yep. The next one up is Proctor says residential apartment, parentheses, multifamily structures. Wallingford and West Rutland do not define them, at least not yet. I haven't gotten that far.
They got it out of order here somewhere.
That... Remember, it's double-sp...
I know. I know. Okay.
Okay. And Proctor says residential apartment, and then in parentheses, multifamily structures, a building or portion thereof designed for occupancy by three or more families living independently of each other. Multifamily is, I mean, multifamily could mean two, I think, and do, and then the big question is, as we've had on, uh, sent to us is, what's a family?
Yep.
So do we, and I think if we look, um, and I did not, and I admit this, did not look to see what, if we define our multifamily, um, and I don't have it off the top of our head, my head, but if we look under multifamily here. My hands are just. Um. You know, we have multi-residents. We don't say what a multi thing is, but we do say it's a one dwel-, a one-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, multi-family dwelling, mobile home, professional residence office, those are permitted uses. We don't define what a multifamily home is. So I'm not sure if we need to do that or not.
Sure if we can, given, not sure what a family is, but.
I don't know that it needs to be defined.
Yeah, I think you know.
I don't, I don't think that.
It sounds like a self-defining word, you know?
Yeah. And I agree, I don't think, I don't think so, and if we do, then we're gonna start.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd rather not. Um. Recycling.
What if someone shows up and says, well, we're two couples with our 16 kids living in our family.
There's occupancy limits.
I mean, we hear everything and anything these days.
Yeah, but if they're two couples and they're, they, they want to be one huge family, then, you know, really, who are we to say otherwise? If you think about it, um.
If the building will hold them.
If the building would hold all 30 some odd people, uh, you know, it's a family. So, and I think we talked about it, and it might be in the defin-, it might be in your section of the definitions where we defined single-family housing as, um, remember, we talked about it a couple of months ago as being a quote-unquote unit? So, um, we can bring it up again next, um, next period, but I, and I'll look again because I think there is a definition from the real estate as to what a multifamily is, and I believe it's only one sentence. So, and I, we already may have it, I just haven't found it. So that's something to check on. Um, recycling collection point, um, we define it, West Rutland defines it, Proctor doesn't.
Mm-hmm.
And basically, this facility would generally be located in a shopping center, parking lot, or other public quasi-public areas such as churches and schools. Um. And it does say temporary, uh, temporary storage of recoverable resources. Frankly, I would really think that we should keep this in because, for example, I know with our Trex, uh, recycling, um, the, one of the bins is located at the high school. So if we get another bin and we want to locate it, say, um, you know, here, on the grounds of town hall, um, otherwise.
We wanted, is there, is this a place to worry about? You know, now we're quote recycling food waste or compost, I mean, and we don't sort of want that anywhere else but at the transfer station.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
Yeah.
If that's worth thinking about here.
Well, it does say recoverable resources. Well. You know? And no processing of such items is allowed, so.
Well, they, it's okay.
Um.
Hopefully no one will really want to do that at the high school, I guess, in any major fashion.
So do you want to put an exception for food products or compostable? Not including?
Yeah, you know, depending on where we allow these, uh, I don't know where, which zones it's allowed in.
Right now, we don't have them in any zones except at the transfer station. We have, I know nowhere is it really addressed.
Yeah, well, so no, none of our, um, like the rural residential zoning area, they, we don't mention anything about it, so I guess not profitable. I'm not even sure why we, why we have a definition.
Yeah.
Cause it changed tomorrow, and now the school, any place that serves food is gonna be required. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I guess, no, let's, let's not.
I mean, maybe it'll be never be used, but at least it's there.
Um, I can do some searching on the VSA when it comes to composting and see what it says, and then just reference to VSA. Okay. I have a note on that. Uh, the rear lot line, West Rutland and we identical, religious institutions identical, renewable energy resources identical, but.
What's the new name for that?
I was just gonna say, I would propose that we change it to alternatives.
Alternative energy?
Yep.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
And then we'll move it out of alternative and put it up with the A's where it belongs. Um, repair shop, basically, um, Wallingford and West Rutland are the same. Residential care is pre-, pretty much, well, Wallingford and Proctor pretty much agree. Uh, a place however named excluding a licensed foster home, which provides for profit or otherwise room, uh, comma, board, comma, and personal care to three or more residences, um, excuse me, unrelated to the home operator. That's pretty much Wallingford and Proctor. West Rutland says a place however named excluding a licensed home, which provides for profit or otherwise room, comma, board, comma, and person, uh, personal care to three or more residents who are not developmentally disabled or physically handicapped and unrelated to the home operator. So. Um, I don't know if we want to add the extra verbiage in or not.
So, so, I'm not sure what.
It could be a C, an elderly person, you know, that doesn't have a disability but needs care. You know what I'm saying?
Exactly.
I think, I think we should just leave it.
I do too.
Yeah, I think we're just gonna kick the beehive if we add stuff to it.
Don't say that. Please don't say that.
Yeah. Okay, and, um, we're gonna probably have to change residential use because we say one, two, or multifamily dwellings, and of course, we've got that term multifamily in there. But that is the term that is being used. Um, however, West Rutland says one, comma, two, or multifamily dwelling units, not associated with short-term or transient use of facilities such as B and B in hotel and motel. And I have to say, I, I prefer, think that's a little clearer definition.
I think so too.
Okay.
I like it.
So.
Steal it.
Jill, you have a comment?
Um. Yeah, I think we should think about that a little.
We can?
Yeah.
We can bring it up next month?
Okay.
Bring it up, okay? Um, restaurants, we say restaurant that delicatessen, and the other two say restaurants. But ours is a public eating place where seats and or counters or window pickup of food are provided for patrons. That's 634 in the printout is the line number. Um, this use is separate from, but may be permitted along with nightclubs, bars, and taverns. Uh, Proctor says a restaurant, an establishment, an establishment whose principal business is the selling of food and beverages to customers seated within or adjacent to the building. Drive-up and drive-through services are prohibited. On-site liquor services are also prohibited, in parentheses, on sale beer and wine are prohibited as regulated by law, end of parentheses. West Rutland says a public eating place where seats and or counters or window pickup of food are provided for patrons. This use is separate from, but may be permitted along with nightclub, see definition use. So.
I like. I like ours.
Yeah, I do too.
And it's, it's more of this bar, so.
Yeah, so I would say let's leave it. Uh, retail stores, we define retail stores, West Rutland defines retail stores, Proctor doesn't. Our retail and West Rutland are identical. Include shop and store for the sale of retail goods, personal service shops, department stores, commercial, commercial schools, and shall exclude any freestanding retail stands, auto service stations, motor, 639 should be in there, vehicle repair service shops, and motor vehicle sales dealerships, and they're identical. I would say leave it.
Yeah.
Um. I didn't find a right-of-way in West Proctor. Our right-of-way and, I mean, I'm sorry, in West Rutland. Ours is a little more defined than Proctor. Our right-of-way says a right-of-way is an easement that allows another person to travel or pass through deeded land. There are public and private rights of way, but neither affect ownership. The most common form of public right-of-way is road or path through the land in order to access a public area. A private right-of-way is to allow a neighbor to cut through someone's property to access their property. Proctor says a strip of land acquired by reservation, dedication, prescription, or, uh, condemnation and intended to be occupied by a street, trail, waterline, sanitary sewer, and/or other public utilities or facilities. I like ours. Because in Proctor, what have, as it says in ours, what happens if you need a right-of-way to get to your property? Technically, in Pro-, in Proctor, the way it's written, it would be a little difficult.
But if you.
I think.
Well, I understand that, but sometimes you have a right-of-way for some service.
Yeah.
So, but we don't sort of, we don't really. We're, we just allow people, but not, let's say, water. You know what I mean, or pipe for water, or.
Okay, do you want to combine the two, or you? Or see about maybe a rewrite, there might be a third definition somewhere?
Oh, I think we can combine some of it and hopefully not have it be twice as long, as long as two put together.
Okay. And.
Erica?
Yes.
I have to go.
Okay. Well, that was it for me.
You have the resources with you to, I, I don't have my notebook, but I have to go anyways, but, um, to keep on working on the definition, so we don't even have to do this next meeting, or?
Uh, no, I don't, I, this is it. That's as far as I got, so we'll have to, we'll have to talk about it next month.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Jill.
Have a good night, thank you.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay. So I think, I think what we, we've done pretty good.
Yeah, we did.
First pass? And, um, Lucy said that she would have hers ready for, uh, next, next meeting. I'll work on these this month and I'll send everybody soft copy, so you can see changes. All right. Um. Are there any other discussion on this? Okay? We don't have anyone from the public, so no public comments. Our next meeting is Tuesday, 13 June. If, our usual time. And if you two are ready.
I will move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. And we are adjourned as of, uh, 2013.